Okay, we're gonna get this started. Thank you so much for joining us. Okay, we ready? Everyone, here we go. All right. All right, welcome everyone to San Rafael City School Board of Education on September ninth, two thousand and twenty five. And I would like to kick us off by just making a comment and a reminder. I really want to acknowledge the families in Minnesota. As we all know, the safety of our students and our staff is our highest priority and something we take very seriously. As we demonstrated in the previous board meeting, we had an approval of a three-year contract with Jason Vickery and the safety expert of Keenan Associates. Centerfell City Schools is constantly reviewing our security measures in the past of the past few years, and we added many layers of safety, including enhancing our school premier perimeter fencing and streamlining our entry protocols and enforced a single point of entry. As many of you know, we have all of these lanyards, and I want to thank everyone that's implementing that. I myself saw this protocol at Davidson's Back to School and also at Davidson's First Principal Coffee Day in the morning, and I think it's just really important that we are all focused on the importance of safety. Furthermore, furthermore, all of our schools have very clear detailed safety plans and safety drills and evacuation procedures. We fully recognize the importance of mental health and mental health for our teachers, our students, and are proud of the work that our schools and our counselors and teams are doing to provide safety every day. And we look forward to partnering with all of our parents, local enforcement, and also keeping all of our staff safe at all times. I also want to remind everyone in the room and on Zoom that on June sixteenth, this board passed a resolution asking trustee Verdas to suspend board member duties until his matter is resolved. As of today, we are still waiting an update regarding the allegations from the district attorney and will continue to proceed accordingly. But be informed that the board did pass a resolution asking for all activities to be paused. And with that, I would like to open the meeting. So can I have a pledge of allegiance? So if that, um, Pepe, would you like to use the pledge of allegiance?
I am the president of the Black flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. All right. With that, do I have an, oh, no reportable closed session action items? And with that, do I have an approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Moved by trustee DeNiva Marsh. Do I have a second?
My second.
Second by trustee Lau. All those in there say aye.
Aye.
Okay, our agenda passes. And now we have a board business which I'm super excited, and I know trustee DeNiva Marsh, this is very close to her heart, is student board members represented by San Rafael High School and Terra Linda High School. So we have them come up, correct?
Yes, yes.
All right.
Let's end up.
Yes, of course.
So we are going to do the.
You're going to be swearing. We're gonna be swearing you in. So, okay, we have here in front of us Alma Camacho. Hi, Alma Camacho. And we also have James Zino again. All right, I will read this for you.
And then do I, I forgot, I read it, they read it back.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, Alma and James, do you solemnly swear and affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you will, with this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will unfaithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
I do.
All right. And with that, you are welcome to be, yes. Okay. All right. All right. And now we go into announcements, and I am going to kick us off with our labor partners. Let's have some announcements from our labor partners.
Perhaps you want to go in the room first. I'm not seeing anybody on Zoom.
Okay. All right. If we want to give them a minute, I'm happy to go with our student trustees.
We might have, I believe we have SRTA in the room.
Oh, sorry. I just was gonna go to Zoom, but let's go. All right.
Good evening, board trustees, superintendent Diaz Geisels, and SRCS community. I am Molly O'Donoghue, Vice President of the San Rafael Teachers Association and first grade teacher at Laureldale. This evening, I'm reporting on behalf of the SRTA educators representing early intervention in TK through eighth grade. Our bargaining team is working with Darlene Avalos and her team to confirm bargaining and negotiation dates for the SRTA's two thousand and twenty six, two thousand and twenty seven contract negotiations. We appreciate Darlene and her team providing a framework from which we could work from in calendaring all of our dates. Thank you. The Venetia Valley Middle School Seven Period Day Committee had their first meeting last week. They are working diligently throughout the month of September to identify a schedule that represents the unique needs of their six-eight program within the bigger TK eight program. Members of the team are collecting feedback bidirectionally from the committee to members and from members back to the committee to ensure that the work they are doing is representative. The TK through five ELA pilot and the six-eight math pilots are ongoing. And lastly, the San Rafael Teachers Association is eager to be part of the ESD Budget Advisory Committee meetings that begin next week and continue through December. We will be listening carefully to tonight's unaudited actual presentation to see how that might impact future budget decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Molly.
Okay, do we have anyone?
I'm not seeing anyone at this time, but perhaps we can come back.
Yes, of course. Can we go to our student trustees? Are you ready to go, James Zino?
Yeah.
Okay, trustee Zino.
Hi, everybody. I hope you're having a great evening. Before my updates this evening, I would like to say on behalf of the students at Terra Linda, thank you so much to the board of trustees and the district cabinet members for their commitment to improving all the facilities across the district. When we returned to the campus this year, we were thrilled to see how awesome the campus looks. Please know how grateful we all are for the work you have done to make the campus such a special place. It makes all of our lives so much better when you can spend six hours of our day at a place that feels cared for and welcoming. And, okay.
That's great.
But for my first update, we had our Black Flag Dance last Friday. It was super fun. ASB worked super hard, and they had all types of like glow sticks and face paint. It was all just a lot of fun. And my next update, we had six hundred and eleven students make the honor roll last semester, so that means we had six hundred and eleven students who earned a three-point-oh GPA or above, so that's pretty cool. Next, the hub is now, the hub is now hosting Fun Fridays. Students will be able to come to the hub on Fridays during lunch to do various fun games, arts, and crafts. Next, Back to School Night happened last week. Parents received a spirited welcome from our varsity cheer team when they entered the campus, and our parent our parent booster groups and community partners provide families with ways to volunteer and get resources. They then were able to meet all of our amazing teachers and learn about our classes. Next, the College and Career Center is holding two college fair this fall. There will be reps from colleges such as Santa Clara, Gonzaga, and Loyola Marymount. And they will be giving presentations to juniors and seniors on Friday during tutorial. And finally, my last update is National Voter Registration Day is next week. Last year, TL registered and pre-registered all of the juniors and seniors. This year, we'll be hosting an Am I Registered event for National Voter Registration Day.
That's awesome.
Great.
Awesome. Trustee Zino, love it. All right, trustee Camacho, welcome.
Hello, my name is Alma, and I serve as an executive board member at San Rafael. Excited to start off the new year, although, as you may know, our senior class had a loss. Seventeen-year-old Adon had lost his life on August eleventh, just before the start of his senior year. With our senior class, we've worked to create different ways to honor his memories. We've come together to honor his, to honor his senior year and give him the experience that he couldn't have. Secondly, our link crew hosted a successful welcome back orientation for the first-year students, and ASB organized a welcome back rally the first week of school. We had a successful run with new members of ASB and rally commissioners, and at the end, we had a moment of silence for Adon. The weekend ended with an ASB fundraiser featuring Quona Ice, and it was a great kickoff for the year. And then next time we'll be having Quona Ice is for our homecoming dance, which will be the week of September twenty-second to September twenty-seven, and during which we'll hold our rally parade and dance. In addition, the same route will be used for the parade. As for the new security and guidelines, students have been adapting with the new gates and guidance, which have led to increased student engagement, actually. Regarding the new gates and security, many students are being accommodated with the new system, continuing with our bulldog ready policy. Teachers and students have noticed an increase in engagement and participation. Lastly, Minka has been very successful in helping students stay engaged with school spirit and in the classroom.
Thank you, trustee Camacho. Thank you for joining us. First, I will go to, do you have anyone on? Nope. Okay, great. All right, then I will go to our dear trustees. I will start with trustee Lau.
Thank you, president.
Thank you for being here. Thank you.
This will be here.
Thank you.
I too want to echo our trustee and trustee about the Back to School Night. I have a chance to attend the Terra Linda High School Back to School Night along with our deputy superintendent Bob McCucci on Thursday, September fourth, representing both as the parents of a junior TL and also the board. It is a very special place of the school, and I too for seeing firsthand the security enhancement or the improvement that took place. I have have a chance to visit with principal Kate Katie Dumlet and also one of the teachers, Karen Madam. And she, they both show me and so proud to show me those bathroom that have been improved for both the boy bathroom and the girls' bathroom as well as the staff bathroom. So I see firsthand how professional they are and how how well done that that they've been put together. I recognize also that one TL was there selling swag, promoting the school spirit, and also other community partner that they're to promote different services available to the students and also to the parents. It was a great turnout. You can tell by the packed parking parking lots that you can't even find any parking spot there. Second update, I want to, our update is I'm really pleased to receive an update from the Marin County Public Finance Authority regarding Dork Hill Workforce Housing Project. I know that they're still working on the balanced financial plan in in the month of September, October, and hopefully they will be turned with a plan in November and December. I have a chance to respond and share with them. I want to share with our fellow board and trustee that I asked my former dean and a colleague at San Jose State, Dr. Robert Idar. He's the professor of economics from San Jose State, to pull some data for us to look at the median rent by county in a ten-year period from January two thousand and fifteen to February two thousand and twenty-five. Out of the twenty-five county in California, Marin County has, the median rent for Marin County is constantly ranked one of the top five. So back in two thousand and fifteen, we ran top three with a median rent of two hundred, two thousand four, about two thousand four hundred and sixty-seven to now that in two thousand and twenty-five, we rank number two amongst all the county in California. It has one of the highest rental rate, median rate of three thousand four hundred and eighty-seven. So I do hope in my sincere wish that Oak Hill Project, the Public Finance Authority, we will come back with a plan to make it financially responsible and feasible to move the project forward. I look forward to receiving more update from them. So those are the two updates I would like to share. So.
Oh, thank you, trustee Lau. All right, trustee DeNiva Marsh.
Well, good evening, everyone. This month I had the pleasure of attending several back-to-school nights, such as my fellow trustees. I was able to attend with Darlene Avalos from our leadership team, visits to the Early Learning Center, Laureldale Elementary, Davidson Middle School, Holman Elementary, and Venetia Valley, and it was a joy to connect with staff. And it was a joy to connect with staff and families at each of these school sites. But really, it was a special joy to connect with our alder residents at each of those sites and actually get like, you know, some one-on-one, um, conversations about how things are going and in a, in a space where it's their natural habitat for the next year. And so I know that's weird to phrase, but it was just really a joy to be able to connect with our alder residents, especially since most of them are SRCS alumni. Last month, I was honored to attend the Marin County Youth Commission swearing-in ceremony. And this organization was founded in nineteen sixty-nine and is one of the nation's oldest youth commissions. And it's really a space to give political voice to young people and civic engagement, especially those from underserved communities. And as youth and young adults, they actually serve as the advisory group to the Marin County Board of Supervisors. And I'm very proud that several of our Sanerfeld City School students from our middle schools as well as our high schools are sworn in representatives in this body. But with that, in this part, a sport, in the spirit of civic engagement, um, we have two trustees from Terre Linda and Sanerfeld High. And so as, uh, trustee Martine had shared, this is something is a personal commitment. We would love to have additional trustees from Venetia Valley, Davidson, and Madrone. And so I'm personally committed to work in partnership, not just with, um, you know, our trustees, but our school sites of how can we engage other young people to join, um, James and Alma appear on the dais with us. So we're committing that partnership. I also want to highlight the district's Every Day Counts and Attendance Matters campaign. I know it doesn't sound exciting, but it really is. Because when students show up every day, and, um, it matters. And I know that our, and it's the beginning of the school year, but we're already setting the, the tone and the habits. And so if we can continue that positivity, um, it will continue into the school year. Maybe I'm just a Pollyanna and I'm just very positive about it. But I just want to thank fellow trustees and our principals for making attendance a top priority from day one this past, you know, the start of the school year. For teachers, this means building strong relationships and spotting early signs of absenteeism and reinforcing in classrooms that every day counts. And for families, it's about knowing that consistent attendance supports both academic and social success. And that support is available at every school site. And finally, at our last meeting, as a board, we passed a resolution spotlighting important observances, including September as Suicide Prevention and Recovery Month. And I really want to thank our school wellness team, staff, and students for being strong advocates and resources of support. Please also know that Marin County Behavioral Health Teams and partners like the Marin County Office of Education are also offering additional bilingual community events this month. And you can find a full list at prevention dot Marin B I R S dot org. Thank you.
Wow, thank you, trustee DeNeyama Marsh. And thank you both. Very, very thorough updates there, trustees. Um, well, hello, everyone. I've already said hello, but thank you so much for everyone being here. I also have the privilege of welcoming all of our SCRS community on Big Cheer Day. I forgot when that was, was that three, four weeks ago? Where everyone cheered on who won and the ice cream and so.
Yes, the animal stop kickoff.
Thank you. I knew you would know. So, welcome, everyone. I know it feels like it was a while ago, but it was just three weeks ago. Um, I also want to thank all the teachers and the staff that put together all these great back-to-school nights. I think I just, one of the things that I loved so much about my back-to-school night at Davidson is I have seen families that I haven't seen in five years. It really brings our entire community of our K through eight students together. And that was really heartwarming to see all these families I haven't seen for a long time, and we're all back together again. So I just think that that's just the beautiful thing about Davidson. I also want to thank Bob's leadership for the security enhancement. I'm very excited about that. And I also want to acknowledge that, uh, with our current climate, you know, I want to say that I will also be looking at Bob's presentation tonight about unaudited actuals because our financial, this financial focus ahead is going to be interesting. Um, we are also going to be welcoming a new bill that's going to enter in January and see how that bill will impact our schools and our public schools. So with that, I, I know that we're all very mindful of being physically responsible and making sure that our schools are in that space. So with that, I am going to thank everyone for joining us. And now to our superintendent. Ms. Perino, do we have anyone online?
We do have, um, Morgan Agnew with SRFT. Would you like to ask him to go now?
Sure.
All right, Morgan, I will, um, give you the opportunity to start your audio and video, and you can begin.
Good evening. I apologize for my tardiness. I hadn't realized we were back to the original six o'clock start time. Um, I'm Morgan Agnew, President of the Sanerfeld Federation of Teachers. Uh, as you know, last year, the district failed to meet its commitments under the fair share formula for the first time since we began using the formula to negotiate salaries. This was not due to a lack of commitment or bad intentions, but rather to a failure to budget sufficiently conservatively. Last spring, I stood before you with a large group of SRFT leaders behind me to describe the lapses that led to that failure. High on our list was the district's failure last year to hold a single budget advisory committee meeting until late in the spring. Well, as the saying goes, be careful what you wish for, because you might get it. As I'm sure you were aware, during the first week of school, the district scheduled not one, not two, but nine high school budget advisory committee meetings throughout the year, with the first one taking place just next week. We are grateful that our requests were heard and honored. We do not look forward to this process, and not just because that's a lot of meetings. It's never fun to make cuts to the budget. We will be cutting classes and programs that offer real benefits to our students. But our job will be to identify those programs that offer the least benefit at the greatest cost. Nevertheless, there will be those who disagree with that final recommendation, and they will come before you to plead for the preservation of one program or another. It is at those moments that I suspect you will be most grateful for the committee. Cutting programs is one of the least pleasant aspects of your job, and you shouldn't have to own that alone. The hu- the Budget Advisory Committee is the opportunity for the entire school community, from teachers to classified staff, to administrators, to students, parents, and our partner organizations, to come together and agree on our shared values and priorities. Only then can we draft a budget that protects those priorities while meeting the district's commitments to provide all employees with fair and equitable salary increases that keep up with inflation and maintain our status as an attractive place to work for talented educators. Thank you.
Thank you, Morgan. Christina, anyone else? Seeing no one else. And, all right, now superintendent.
Just very quickly echoing on what Morgan says. It is the time for task force, budget committees, uh, culture committees, and DLAC committee, and your voice matters. So we sent out a communication to all of our community today asking for participation. So whatever your passion is, if it has to do with student achievement, uh, budget priorities, or creating a welcoming and inclusive learning environment, there's a place for you. So we invite you to attend one of our, our task force, our budget committees, or a culture committee, so.
That's all I have? Okay, great. All right, thank you. Since there's no one, so we will be moving on. Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you, everyone, for all those, uh, announcements. And now we are going to public comment on non-agendaized items. Um, so do I have anyone that has a public comment on non-agendaized items? And you have two and a half minutes to either fill out the blue form or raise your hand on Zoom.
You can ask those online to use the raise hand feature if they would like to make a public comment via Zoom. I'll give it a moment. Okay. Seeing none.
Okay, thank you so much, Christina. All right, so we have none. We will move to approval of the consent agenda items. Is there any consent agenda, agenda item that my trustees would like to pull? Or if not, I would ask for an approval of the consent agenda eyes, items.
Emotions are pulled?
Second.
Okay, moved by trustee Lau, second by trustee DeNeyama Marsh. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the consent agenda passes. Thank you for that. And, um, now we are going to move to, um, discussion and information, correct?
Yes.
All right. And with that, uh, I will hand it off to the strategic plan refresh superintendent.
Thank you, president Martine. Ms. Perino, if you could be my clicker?
Yeah, that'd be great.
So we're very excited about our, uh, purpose tonight regarding the strategic plan. We will be reviewing it and updating to make sure that it still stays relevant. It's a dynamic roadhouse, roadmap. As, um, my predecessor said before me, it is the lighthouse of our district. It drives everything that we do for student achievement and student success. Um, we are very, um, excited about these regular updates because it helps us realign our resources. It focuses on our measured outcomes and it fosters a culture of collaboration. And now more than ever, because we're, uh, going through budget reductions, this is very important that we review this, so. Ms. Perino? So these are our outcomes. We're going to continue to confirm our values, our culture, graduate profile. We're also going to revise our goals and actions that will outline our resources and add additional organizational alignment to our systems and structures. So here is the process. Preparing as in tonight and as, as in the communication that we sent out earlier today. Um, we will have a group of stakeholders who will engage, evaluate where we are with our strategic plan, um, look at our core elements and look at, um, what we should continue doing, what we should start doing, and maybe what we have achieved and accomplished, and we can move on. We will share the draft to the board, um, for refinement and continued direction. We'll bring you some updates during the course of the year. We will, of course, communicate very clearly and transparently in different modalities to ensure that we are, um, keeping up with, with our updates. And we will continue to implement modern adjustments. And of course, a key consideration is what we realistically can implement in our years coming out with our budget. So we have a, a strategic plan refresh task force. We are asking for representatives, and on the next slide, we'll show you who we're looking for. We have our dates and our scope and our timeline. Um, on this agenda, on this presentation, we have the current plan and also our LCAPs. Our LCAPs are what basically show us how we implement our goals from our strategic plan. And then we will also be surveying our community members and, um, our stakeholders in the process. So here are our dates. We're going to start, uh, October fifteenth. We're trying to find a way to be able to get the work that we need done without interfering too much. We have a lot of things going on with our budget advisory committees and also with our culture, uh, and climate, uh, committee. We want to be able to have some meaningful time with our stakeholders. We're looking for one to two board members. We're looking for some students. We're hoping we can shoulder tap some of our, uh, student trustees, student board members, and other members of, of student leadership at our, uh, middle schools, and even get some input from our elementaries. We're looking for district office staff, and we already have our principals that have signed up for that from elementary, middle, and high school. And we're looking for teachers as well, um, from both the high school and the elementary districts, and of course, classified staff. So we're working with our, our union leaders to be able to, to recruit for, with us in that sense, and of course, our parents. So we're, we're hoping to get a nice, large group to be able to work on this. Um, and these, this is the process. We're going to look at progress. We're going to look at our goals and look at our measurements and our data and look at where we are at with performance measures and indicators for student success, staff success, what are measurement and indicators for community engagement and, and of course, our systems and structures. And look at where we need to grow and where we are strong. Um, and then we also need to look through the lens of equity and inclusion, all of the work that we did last year in our culture. We need to be able to in- uh, implement that in our strategic plan. And then these are other ways we're going to engage our stakeholders. Um, conduct the surveys of our staff and family, students, the parent listening sessions, district leadership team, and also any additional opportunities that the board or, uh, public can think of that we could tap into. That would be fantastic. We want to make sure we, we get a lot of input in these response. And then these are our core elements. We need to make sure that we are still refining and reviewing our values and our culture and our graduate profile, which is very important to us. And then aligning our LCAPs, our school plans for student achievement based on revisions. And then also look at those federal mandates, at state mandates, which are changing constantly and how they influence our plan. And then here are our steps. It will contain all of the, uh, these components that it has already, just in a refined, more up-to-date process, including a timeline for, uh, implementing. And then we will share the, the draft with our groups and with the board for consideration and continued discussion. So we will be back during the course of the school year for this. And then we will look for your approval, and then we will communicate it in very, very different modalities on what's changed and what, what is, what is still going on as far as what we continue to implement with all of our stakeholders. And then, um, we will look at the implementation to timeline. We will have to look, of course, at our goals and action steps, depending on where we are with budget allocations and resources, and maybe make some adjustments according to that based on our, our goals and our action steps. Um, and then the three big pe- well, the four big pieces are, you know, we need to make sure that our outcomes are about all of our students, every, everyone, which is our equity, and keep our process open and very, very participatory, which is very important to transparency. And of course, the biggest challenge is make it realistic within the budget and capacity restraints, which is our sustainability. And then, you know, celebrate what we've, we've done, you know, come back and share what we've done. That's pretty, pretty amazing and pretty, uh, pretty great, so. So at this time, if you have any ideas, any suggestions, any questions for me, um, that I can carry forward with the strategic plan task force, that would be very helpful and appreciated.
I love that we have this opportunity for questions and ideas, because I think it's a great way to engage our communities. So with that, uh, trustee Lau, any, any questions?
Um, not, not any specific questions. Um, but thank you, superintendent, for preparing the presentation and share about this really exciting, uh, plan that, uh, to look forward to. As I'm the, the new board trustee on the board, so I haven't gone through the last process. So I, I personally looking forward to, uh, supporting and provide any, any idea possible to support the district and, and our leadership team in terms of coming up with the, the new strategic plan. Um, I do, I do agree and, and really, um, appreciate the focus in prioritizing the effort for all the students uh, and also the transparency. So, um, the, maybe I have one request, you know, I know that, um, you know, especially in terms of promoting the process, being open and, and transparent. I know I kind of spent some time on our website looking for some relevant information, especially with the, um, uh, Together Twenty Twenty Four. Um, and I, you know, if I may, I would like to make sure that we have this information available. I know we still have Together Twenty Twenty Three on the website, uh, and I couldn't find anything related to the, to the, uh, to modify,
Okay.
uh, strategic plan for To Get Together Twenty Two Four. So I want to make sure that, you know, we can update that, make sure that we have all the relevant materials available so that our parents or whoever, community who want to participate, that they can be informed and help support us, so. Thank you, but, thank you for the effort.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Lau. Uh, trustee DeNeyama Marsh?
Uh, the, not, uh, very comprehensive and to learn from how we communicated and engaged, uh, not only SRCS, uh, parents and families and students, but also staff, all of us in our SRCS community. About the community partnership work that Pepe is leading and then the work that of our school community liaisons. And so what, what I want to uplift is that, uh, for key considerations, when we're thinking about, yes, we have the formal task force, yes, we have these formal spaces and places and meetings, but where can we also roadshow in, in meeting where folks are at? The stool site councils, the ASB meetings, like even if it's just one touch point every six months or through the process, it'd be great to meet them where they're at in their meetings to say, do you know that this is happening? And that you have representation on the task force? I think trying to find other ways to communicate that this, we're all in this together, but in spaces where they don't have to come to us and we can come to them. And I think about our multilingual families and community members as well. So, um, not saying that we want to create more work, but how can we lean into systems that are already in existence? Like our, can we, if you already gather all of our partners in a space for the community partnerships work, can we do a presentation there? If you're already gathering our community and school liaisons in a place, can we do a presentation there that is built and focused on them? Uh, that would be great. And I love, and I know this wasn't mentioned earlier, but, um, with superintendent on the move and, you know, beyond back-to-school night, the different spaces where we can also engage students in other ways, not just that because they are ASB representatives, but other, um, students that, um, how we can engage them, I'm happy to think more creatively, but that is of top of mind right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee DeNeyama Marsh. Um, yes, I think this is really exciting. Uh, I was also thinking about alumni that are now parents, and parents in our school. Uh, I was also thinking along the sides or along the thoughts of trustee DeNeyama Marsh about, you know, we have our school site, um, meetings on different schools. We also have different committees. We have all of our principal coffees. So recruiting those, I also know you're top of mind with DLAC. Um, and also the teachers that are now teaching at Davidson that were, you know, our students. Um, and I was curious, are these on Zoom or in person?
The meetings will, the task force meetings will be in person. The meetings will, the task force meetings will be in person.
Oh, will be in person. So that's really helpful for people to know that that will be in person. That wasn't my other question I had. But no, I think this is really exciting and I really hope a lot of people raise their hands and join us because this is a critical time for our schools. So that's all I have. Exciting to hear that ideas. Okay, great. Alrighty, any, that's it? Well then, okay, thank you, superintendent. And now we're going to move to capital facilities program. All right. Drum roll.
You're coming right first. Ladies first.
Good afternoon, superintendent, he is Gazelle and President Perle and Martine. I want to thank you for having me up here today to give the annual report for the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. And my name is Samina. I am a parent of a seventh grader at Davidson Middle School. She's right here.
Do you want to be our new student trustee?
I know.
I was like, yeah, let's talk. See, I'm doing my job recruiting. Thank you.
And I also have a fifth grader at Sun Valley Elementary. And I'm here to provide the Citizen Bond Oversight Committee twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four and a report for bond measures A and B one. So it are A and B one and then B two and C. They were passed in twenty fifteen and twenty twenty-two respectively. And the report includes a statement indicating that San Rafael City Schools is in compliance with the requirements in the Calif- California's Constitution, a summary of the committee's proceedings and activities for the preceding year, and a summary of the work that was in progress and a look ahead to work that occurred over the summer of twenty twenty-five. I want to thank Bob Martucci, Tim Ryan at the district, and Bill Savage and Phyllis Silverstein with Van Palp Construction Services. Their dedication, foresight and skill and hard work have allowed the district to maximize the funds available while staying on top of the many activities that are going on. They, I also want to mention that the amount, the clarity and amount of reporting that we get as a district, I think, is unparalleled and it's been, it's so much work to just do the work itself and then to have, you know, then to put the time and effort and heart into making sure that everything is well communicated to our community is pretty incredible. And their creativity has lent the process lent to the process and saved the district millions of dollars. And it's resulted in exceptional work. I think everyone that has spoken today is really excited about things they're seeing and I'm excited to also see all the future work that's going to come out of this. I'd also like to recognize the six other committee members that volunteered each time, their time each quarter to provide a valuable role in ensuring taxpayer funds are being spent as intended and that the projects are being completed wisely and efficiency, efficiently. Just to give some background for the CBOC, for those who are unfamiliar, it was formed in twenty sixteen to ensure there's independent review of expenditures for construction, repair, and modernization of our school sites throughout the elementary, middle school, and high school districts. We make sure funds are spent as voters intended and that the projects are completed wisely and efficiently. We meet quarterly to review the budgets and expenditures of each bond. At the start of each meeting, we have the opportunity to tour school sites at various stages of completion. And we've gotten a chance to see the amazing work throughout both the high school and elementary school districts. And during these, during oh, Tim, Bill, and Bob have taken this serious effort to answer the many questions we have and take care and follow up with answers they don't have in the moment. We receive construction updates for all active projects. And we preview projects approved that are ready for construction. In May, the committee reviewed the bond audits completed by Negro and Negro. And I'm here to report that based on the information provided, SRCS is in compliance with the requirements of Article thirteen A, Section one B three of the California Constitution. And just as a parent and resident of San Rafael, it's it's really, there's there's a moment of pride every time, you know, I drop off my daughter at Sun Valley or I drop her up at Davidson to see the work that's been happening and to know that a lot of kids feel like James where they get to go to school each day and the teachers get to go to school each day and do their best work because they're feeling their best. They're looking their best and they're feeling their best. So and I'm also excited that my kids get to enjoy the work and the few that's going to happen in the future. Any questions?
I was going to say, thank you so much for presenting and I want to acknowledge that I believe your role is a very big volunteer role. So thank you to you for coming forward as a parent and advocate for our students and our schools. So personally, at this moment, I do not have a question. I do want to thank you for this massive volunteer role that you're taking on. Any questions from our trustees?
No, just in the same space of of gratitude and also acknowledgement of your other, you said six committee members that that sort of write on on this as well. It's very dense information.
It's a lot of
It's a lot of information, right? And so this is really, you're 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 prime and ready if you ever want to be a school board member. But this this is civic engagement at its finest. And so thank you for your volunteer commitment as well as the other board committee members too. Thank you.
Thank you.
And for also making it accessible to to our 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 student and family and community, committee, uh, community. I know it's hard and it's dense information, but the way you just shared it made it very approachable.
Thank you.
You know, I I too want to want to thank you for your time. Having served on a similar bond oversight committee with the Marin Community College District for over ten years, the last ten years, I know how how much work that it took, you know, to to have to reveal all the material, provide the oversight, which is very important to to make sure the public funds being spent accordingly. Even though it's after the fact, but the check and balance were important. So personally, again, I want to thank you and the community member to participate in this very important committee. And I'm also pleased to hear that the committee will command approval for the the report that there's no issue with full comply. So thank you for your work.
Thank you. Thank you. And I just want to say, one thing I did want to note is I I did want to echo what you said is the team's ability to manage up the community of all the projects that are going on and manage down to all the community members. And I think their responsiveness is amazing and holding an impromptu community meeting if that's what needs. So I just did want to highlight that that is impressive of like, I can manage up, I can manage across, I can manage down, I can hold a meeting. So thank you for all of that hard work. So you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we will be following up about that student trustee. I'm with you.
And share with your friends, the strategic planning. I think you have some good friends over there. All right.
President Martine, we do have a hand raised, potentially for public comment.
Okay, are we having?
Yes.
Please.
For public comment for this item?
Yes, this is perfect. Thank you so much.
All right. So we have Jake Swan with his hand raised. So I will unmute you, Jake, and you are able to begin speaking with your public comment. Hi, Jake. Hi, Jake. If you have a public comment for the school board, you're welcome to give it now. Would you like me to give it a moment?
Yes, you can give it a moment and have, you know, a moment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Jake, you should be able to unmute yourself if you have a public comment to give. Perhaps we can come back to it if he does have a comment.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jake. We will wait for you. Okay, great. And now we go into discussion and action session. And the first one is a hot topic. Business services approval of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five unaudited actuals for the elementary school district.
Thank you. I will get the presentation up. But before we do that, I do want to say that of all the education finance reporting periods, unaudited actuals is my, by far my favorite. It's it is the one time during the life cycle of a budget where you're actually looking at what happened, right? Numbers are hard. It's how much came in, how much went out. And it's not based on projections or estimates, or it's 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 sort of that one moment in the life cycle of a budget where you truly get to feel a sense of where the district's finances are. And none of it is possible without an incredible amount of hard work from Tywo Madison, our director of fiscal services, and Chris Pozedel, our accounting manager, and Emily Bush, our executive coordinator and business services, who, you know, that's the team that kind of helps pull this all together for talking a little bit about the life cycle of the budget. This budget started way back in January of twenty twenty-four as a a bunch of proposals, right? And it's worked its way all the way through to now where we are closing the books on twenty-four, twenty-five and preparing to have an independent audit from our auditor, NiGRO and NiGRO. As you know, there's always two budgets kind of happening simultaneously. So we're closing out twenty-four, twenty-fives, unaudited actuals, and we're also, we will probably immediately jump into preparing for our work in not only with the budget advisory committee meeting, but with the first interim report for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. So the work, the work never ends. We're going to jump right into the elementary general fund just to take a look at our total revenues for twenty-four, twenty-five and our total expenditures for twenty-four, twenty-five. And if you look at the column that's titled unrestricted, you can see the total number of, you know, unrestricted revenues and expenditures. And then that 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 thing that happens where our expenditures are below our revenues until we bring in the contributions from the general fund to restricted programs. And you can see that we did finish twenty-four, twenty-five with a structural deficit in place of eight hundred thirty-three thousand, three twenty-nine. In the grand scheme of things and a historical perspective, that's not a huge deficit in a in a budget of close to ninety-one million dollars. But it is certainly something that we have to address going forward as we go into the fall. That's sort of the initial look at the size of the 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 problem, as it were, in the elementary district related to the unrestricted budget. But you can see that we're in a pretty healthy position. We are right at the board's identified goal of seventeen percent reserves. I sort of highlighted those in purple, not only because I do love purple, but I wanted you to see that that seventeen point six percent is derived from looking at the ending fund balance against the total expenditures unrestricted and restricted. So that seventeen million is seventeen point six percent of a total of ninety-six point five million dollars in expenditure. So in in the grand scheme of things, a strong position to be in with a structural deficit in place that we certainly want to not ignore. And then we'll talk a little bit later about where we're at in terms of our one-time quote unquote pandemic-related dollars. As it gets further away from the pandemic, it's harder to keep calling them pandemic dollars, but that's where they started. So any questions about the elementary kind of high-level position?
Thank you, trustee, trustees. I will go to trustee Lau. Do you have any questions so far at this moment?
Thank you, thank you, Bob, for, again, the the work that your team put together and and monitoring, be able to provide the report. Just want to recognize the hard work and and certainty, some some of the things that we, you know, to deal with to to come up with the the audit. I understand that the 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 deficit would actually improve in terms of lower. Is there any kind of a contributing factor to having a better ending with the fund balance?
Yeah, this is a pretty common, not necessarily specific to the structural deficit, although that does look better than it did when we were looking at our budget with estimated actuals, projected revenues. There's a lot of conservative budgeting that happens, not just in this organization, but in most organizations where you're budgeting a little more than what you actually spend. And it isn't until June thirtieth and shortly after that Chris and Tywo and and the accounting team starts to really reconcile all of the accounts. There's a whiteboard in the accounting office with a list of all the resources and they write them down as they finish them. And it's, you know, it's, I should take a picture of it sometime and put it in my presentation. And so once they've reconciled all the different resources and expenditures associated with that, that's when you start to see that that swing. And I'm going to talk a little bit about, and and the slides coming up, I'm going to talk a little bit about that difference and what that looks like. And I think I'll be able to speak more to that.
Thank you, Bob. Trustee DeNeyama Marsh?
No, if you're going to address that in the next couple of slides, I will wait my turn. Thank you.
Okay. Moving forward to the high school district. We always have the the fun of getting to do everything twice. Our high school district position is improved from when we last looked. However, we, as well as the elementary district, continue to have a structural deficit of five hundred eighty-nine thousand, four fifty-nine in the high school district. We do have that ending fund balance, which is two point six million, and that gives a reserve level of four point eight percent. That is, again, from a fiscal perspective, this is dangerously low. As you know, the state minimum is three percent. And at second interim and at budget adoption for twenty-five, twenty-six, we were projecting reserves to be closer to three percent. So we have improved somewhat, but it it we're we're still not very far away from three percent and we are very far away from the board's identified goal of seventeen percent. The high school district, in my time, I think this is my fourth unaudited actuals. And in my time here, the high school district has has never had reserves to the tune of seventeen percent, but we we've been in the double digits. And so that gives you a sense as to how that shift has happened over the last several years, which with spending down our reserves. Keep going or?
Keep going.
Okay.
Yep.
So if we look at our unrestricted ending fund balance at unaudited actuals, so as of June thirtieth, you can see this year, twenty-four, twenty-five, or last year, the year we're talking about, seventeen million compared to the average ending fund balance over a six-year period, right at seventeen million dollars. So I would say our elementary district, that swing of or or that ending fund balance when the year is over, we're sort of right at the average. It's gone up, it's gone down. But so I I think that further underscores that the elementary district is, you know, if we can, if we can address that structural deficit, we're in a, we're in a good position to be able to do that. If you look at the high school district, the unaudited actuals for twenty-four, twenty-five, our ending fund balance is two point six five million. Over the six-year period, we were coming in more at five million. So that, again, further underscores that the high school district is sort of below average in its ending fund balance compared to how we've been over the last six years. Well, how we've been over the last six years. Continuing with that, I wanted to take a look at. The swing that you, that you talked a little bit about, trustee Lau, that from second interim, ending fund balance. Which is sort of our last look at any budget before we close the books and actually get the actuals. So for elementary, our second interim estimated actuals was fifteen point three million. Maybe fifteen point four if you round up. At unaudited actuals, we're at seventeen million, that difference is one point six. If you look at the average swing over the last six years from second interim. To unaudited actuals, the average is actually two point five million, so I think that's a sign of. You know, the team get, getting better at estimating those actuals throughout the year to try to get a more clear picture as we're moving along. And then if you look at the high school district, similar story in the sense that we were projecting. The ending fund balance to be one point seven million at second interim, which as a reminder is sort of at the, by the. As of the end of February. And then at unaudited actuals, there was a swing into the positive of two point six five million, so the difference there is. Eight hundred seventy thousand, right? Over the six-year average, the high school district has swung from second interim to unaudited actuals to the tune of about nine hundred nineteen thousand, so. Kind of right there in the ballpark of what we would normally expect to see, which is something we've been diving into. You know, over the last year to try to get, to try to have a better sense of how to make. Decisions throughout the year for the coming year. You know, when, when you know that there's going to be. An improvement, or what people often say, like, how much money falls out of the budget when you close the books, right? To have a better sense of what that is, helps us make better decisions about what we can or can't afford, and that's. Something that I wanted to share, and the reason that this happens is you conservatively budget, but you don't expend those funds, right? That happens in all areas of our district, whether it's unfilled positions or vacancies that occur for all kinds of reasons. Whether it's the timing of grants or apportionments that come in late, or it's sometimes it's us. While we're closing the books, finding opportunities to transfer expenditures. From the unrestricted side of the budget to the restricted side of the budget to try to maximize. The restricted dollar, so that's part of how that happens, right? Some of it's just natural, some of it's active. I got a little bit excited about working with Gemini in our Google suite, and so I created a series of pie charts. And, and so I'm not gonna spend a ton of time on all of them, but it was actually just something that I wanted to try to do, so this is, this is just for a different look. At the revenue, both unrestricted and restricted. So if you look at like the orange, the blue, and the, I don't know what that is, pink or light red. That's our unrestricted part of the budget, you can see that that's the majority. And then the three point three, the eleven point eight, and the ten point eight, that's our federal, state, and local restricted dollars. So you can see where the money is coming from, and a reminder that a hundred percent, or the whole pie, is ninety one point five million. If we look at unrestricted expenditures, you'll, you have an opportunity to see. You know, the majority of those are going to, if you look at the yellow, the forty eight point two percent, the thirteen point nine, and the twenty two point five, right? That's people, and that is the majority of our budget is certificated classified salaries and. The benefits associated with all of those people. And then the next, you know, the largest one would be just the services and operations of running a district of this size. And again, the unrestricted expenditures is fifty six point two million.
Can you verify what other outgo means?
Yes, other outgo are, help me Taiwo, but it's transfers from.
You're just, you're, it's basically stuff moving, moving money out, out, out of the general fund and into. Like we moves, like we move a portion to. Like for high school, I think it's adult, we have money that we did adult head and stuff like that.
So you have like restricted programs where you might have a funding resource connected to that, but it might not fund the entire thing. And so we might move money from the general fund to cover the difference, those kinds of things.
Thank you for that clarification.
Of course. Looking at restricted expenditures, similar type of graph. You can see the, you know, the, the federal dollars, the state grants, the one-time funds, right? And how those are being spent, again, a lot of that is going to people. A lot of that is going to other services or, or contracts or other types of operations, so that's the elementary district. Similar with the high school district, you can see most of those dollars come from LCFF unrestricted. Quick note here that when we ended twenty four, twenty five. We swung back to basic aid, and we'll probably sit there for a moment, and we'll probably swing back to LCFF. But again, whether we're basic aid or LCFF. It, it doesn't, it doesn't really change the amount of money we get, unless we were receiving. And a, a huge amount of property taxes and we were so deep into basic aid. We're not there, right? We're, we're in basic aid right now, I think I have the number coming up, but it's, it's in the low. Hundreds of thousands, I think it's two hundred something, so hopefully we'll come across that as we keep going. And then unrestricted expenditures, again, similar story. Most of it is going to people and the benefits associated with those people, and then other services and contracts. And in terms of expenditures, very similar story in the high school district. Salaries, benefits, services, contracts, those kinds of things. Transportation being one of them. So looking at our, you guys who have been here, who have been, you know. Steadfast participants of these budget presentations, you've seen this slide before. We keep updating it with new information, and two things have happened which have sort of shifted. The story a little bit, and these things happened after the governor, after the governor's budget in the, in the summer. One of those is an augmentation to the learning recovery block grant, so if you look at the top, it says seven, four, three, five. Which would probably mean nothing to most people, but that is the resource code. And you can see that the state augmented that amount by three hundred nineteen, nine forty seven. So we've added that in. We also got a new resource, a new block grant. I, I know we try not to use acronyms, but it doesn't, this thing doesn't fit in that little box. And that is the Student Support Professional Development Block Grant, the SSPDBG, okay? And that's resource sixty nineteen, and that is new, and so that is, you can see that coming in at one point three million. In the twenty five, twenty six beginning balance, along the side there when it says BB, that's beginning balance. And EXP is expenditures, and so that was not, that came in and was apportioned. I, I think we actually haven't even gotten it yet, but we have assurance that that money will be coming, and we have not budgeted it yet in twenty five, twenty six. And we wouldn't plan, in this, if we kept with. The model of this original plan where we identified activities and spent through our COVID dollars. Spending the ones that sunsetted first, you'll see that we would start to tap into these funds. In the twenty six, twenty seven year, and so this has pushed. The COVID expenditure story out another year, however. We are, we, I still strongly feel like we need to not postpone that conversation. And start to look at reductions that we can make going into twenty six, twenty seven. So that we are not leaving the whole thing at the end, and so we'll continue that conversation during our Budget Advisory Committee meetings. A similar story in the high school. Lesser amounts, you can see the augmentation of the Learning Recovery Block Grant. Was a hundred, about a hundred fifty thousand dollars, so we've added that in. And then we also have the Student Support Professional Development Block Grant, which is new, coming in of seven hundred ninety thousand, six eighty one. And at this particular time, we would not spend that. Until, like, if we kept with this plan, that, that money, we don't see a sunset date on that yet, and so. We would spend down the Learning Recovery Block Grant first, before we would ever tap into. That discretionary block grant, so that's, that's kind of where we're putting it for the moment. Is this, is this making sense?
So that's why for that column, seven ninety is steadfast, steady, because you're spending down.
Right, cuz we're not spending it, yeah. We're just, we're just carrying it forward to the beginning balance, and for now, as, you know, that's, that's where it is at the moment.
Which, which is very significant, right? Because we're looking at the old projection. For the elementary school district, we are projecting a minus one point four million. Now there is at least a positive, and then here, also from a ninety two to one, to a little bit over one million. Is there any restriction that, for the block, block grant, what, what kind of activities?
I mean, I think it, it's in the name, student support, which we could create a list. We can fill up the walls of this room with a list of things that student support, you know, that addresses that, and professional development, right? So, and it says, it is a block grant, there is a discretionary aspect to it, so it, it is. You know, I think we're still learning about it, a lot of times what happens is the, you get, they, you know. Legislature passes something, they, they put this money out, and then everybody scrambles to try to figure out what it means. What's the reporting structure gonna look like? How are we gonna be held accountable? And that's sort of where we're at at the moment. But I, I'm looking at it as fitting in with all the things that we're already using all of this money for. It seems to fit right in with that. Okay, just looking at how we ended the year in enrollment and average daily attendance, you can see in the elementary district, we ended. If you look at the, the period to ADA for last spring, we ended the year at ninety five point one seven percent attendance. So again, remember that means for every dollar, we're getting ninety five cents, right? And then for the high school district, we talked about this before, there was a, a bit of a dip. At the end of the year, and we ended the year at ninety one point two two, so for both elementary and the high school district. That represents below the average that we've, that we had pre-pandemic, right? And so we're still working to get back to and maintain that higher level. Anything that we can do related to attendance impacts both, both districts at this point. So just a quick recap for both the districts, reserve levels represent. An increase in ending fund balance over estimated actuals, talked about that, we talked about first interim. How that's coming up, that will show how this ending fund balance, as well as the work that the Budget Advisory Committee does. Related to reductions, how that impacts the, the twenty five, twenty six through the twenty seven, twenty eight, the multi-year projections. And as we said, both districts have a structural deficit that has to be addressed. And so if we're looking at what is the absolute minimum right now that we need to look at in terms of budget reductions? It is to the tune of those structural deficits. That just keeps us status quo, right? And so for the elementary district, that's around eight hundred plus, and the high school district, it's five hundred, and then on top of that layer. The, the work that we need to do with things that are being funded by our COVID resources, right? So that all comes to the, into the mix. Let's see, and then, again, oh yeah, here we go, the high school district ended twenty four, twenty five in basic aid status. So we're two hundred thirty four thousand dollars into basic aid, meaning that the property taxes that came in for twenty four, twenty five. Were two hundred thirty four thousand dollars higher than what we would have gotten from the LCFF calculation. So that, two hundred thirty four thousand dollars, that is, that could change in an instant. Being impacted by all the factors, right? Whether it's enrollment, whether it's ADA, whether it's, you know. The way that property taxes come in for twenty five, twenty six, right? So that it's, we are, in the high school district, we are very much in, on the cusp, and we just kind of get, we, we're blown by the winds of. Property tax and LCFF calculation. And then the most exciting part is the GAN limit, I know you guys were all waiting. We're gonna talk about the GAN limit, but it's a public notice that has to be included in our unaudited actuals, and it's. An appropriation limit that essentially if you. If you spend, if a district spends money, that is, that exceeds the expenditure limit. Proposed by Prop thirteen in nineteen seventy eight and Prop four in nineteen seventy nine. They, they're supposed to either return it to the taxpayers, or the state can come in and. Account for some of your excess expenditures and revenues as its own, right? Like as, it's the state's expenditures, and so we have to notice any time that we're either. You know, I think in the elementary district, we're at zero, the high school district, we were, we exceeded it. Slightly, I think it was one and a half million, somewhere in there, and we just have to notice. You know, we have to have this notice in there that that happens, it doesn't necessarily change anything about our finances. But it's a notice to the county and to the state that, that we've exceeded the GAN limit, or we're at the GAN limit, so. That's your GAN limit tutorial for, for today, next class is a year from now. Questions or comments?
All right, here we are, questions or comments? Trustees, I would like to start with trustee Lau.
And if not, I can go.
Yeah, you, you might go first, yeah.
Do you wanna go, trustee DeNava Marsh?
Yeah, you actually addressed my, my questions, but I follow up, but I just appreciate the, the, the thoughtfulness of breaking down, there's a lot of acronyms in all of these things. But I think it's so important, especially as we move into these, I don't say budget hearings, these meetings for transparency and community. As much as we can clarify what those acronyms are, that'd be great, so I don't know if that means like an attachment appendix for, for future. But I appreciate that additional context from earlier from previous questions, more of that.
Thank you, trustee DeNava Marsh, I think, you know, what my questions are, is I would love to know. Not only to you, Bob, but to your team, knowing that this is your first time here, and, and keeping in mind of the reserves and the importance of, you know. The road ahead, like what do you think is the best course of action that we should be thinking about?
Well, I think I said earlier that.
And I wanna restate it.
Yes, I'm going to. That at the very least, we have carried structural deficits for, for too long. And we, there have, you know, when we looked back at a historical, there have been years where we were, we had an excess, or we were sort of right at zero. But for the last few years. Or we were sort of right at zero, but um for the last few years, we've had these structural deficits and so. As we are moving into a fall where we're gonna have to talk about reductions. And make some hard decisions and and determine what our priorities are. One place to start is to address the number of that's in that structural deficit, right? And that is that that will help us maintain our reserves. If we can go deeper than that structural deficit, we begin to build up reserves. So when I'm looking at the elementary district, I think we our charge going forward is to address. The structural deficit and start to look at all of the items that are being funded that are outside of the classroom. Um because I we're really not overstaffed in the classroom in the elementary district. Um and we made some tough decisions before the year began to to, you know, to adjust our staffing. But it's really looking at what our priorities are of those covid dollar funded actions. And and things that are outside of the classroom and determining what are the priorities? And how can we address both the structural deficit and make some reductions? That allow us to absorb the things that are most important to us. And in the high school district, I think again, we start with that structural deficit, which is five hundred something thousand. And we also layer on top of that the covid one-time funds. That we need to do a similar thing with, look at our priorities, look at things outside of the classroom, uh look at our staffing ratios. And if we want to build up our reserves in the high school district. We're gonna have to go deeper and really be very, very careful about. Any new expenditures that we add to that budget because we um. You know, in the high school district, it it feels a little bit to me like our backs are against the wall. And whereas in the elementary district, we're not quite so pushed up against the the wall, right? So um that that's I think where that's the place to start and I'm preparing. Like crazy with my team for next week, our first budget advisory committee meetings, which hopefully will be. A little bit more of setting the context and educating people about where we're at. To prepare us then to have the hard conversation, so we're not gonna jump right in and start slashing things, right? Uh people, everybody needs to kind of come from the same place of understanding. And then the next meeting, we will start to really dig in and look at, have, you know, get into the weeds.
Thank you, I think my other question that I get asked often and I'd rather hear it from you is what does district enrollment mean? That's different between our elementary and our high school and what impacts does that have? And and I think that's not clear for people.
So. For. Let's take out for a moment, let's take out the whole whether the high school's basic aid or LCFF. And let's, cuz we we were operating most of last year that that both were LCFF. And so that means that when students are, you know, at school and in their seats and learning. Um they are getting the most out of their education. And they are also driving most of the funding resources that come to the district, right? Every time a student shows up for a day, you know, is is marked present that day. Um you could think of it as ninety dollars.
Right.
Right? If you if you really break it down, that's a good number to start with. Um but so so the focus is twofold, right? It's you want to get the most out of your learning and we all know that when we miss a day of work, it's really hard to get caught back up. The same is true in in school and we also know that um until the funding structure changes at the state level. We get paid for who comes through the door. Um and I think we're, I think we have to be very careful going forward because. And I I'm gonna do an enrollment update at a future board meeting, but you know. Compared to where we ended the year to how we're starting the year, it's a little concerning. Um you know, we're down, we're down in enrollment, so even if you have, you know, a hundred percent of lower enrollment. Is um you know, may not may not be better than ninety five percent of higher enrollment, right? So we're gonna have to sort of watch that um and make sure that um we're doing everything we can. To get the students that are enrolled with us here and and I think we have to push away the noise. Of whether it's basic aid or not basic aid, um you know, for the time being.
Thank you, trustee Lau, thank you Bob.
I'm looking at the, I I I think I think you 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 know, already addressed. The the factor that contribute to the fund balance at the end of the net. Um so I think that those contributing factor that you highlighted really helped to kind of understand. And and so that we can do a more precise, you know, better budgeting, so it's not just being conservative, but knowing exactly what impact. At the end ending balance of of the year. Um but I I I do feel that we do have to take ownership of the deficit, addressing the def- structural deficit. Identifying what exactly the cost of the structural deficit and I'm not expecting just you doing it or or our school district doing it. Even at work at the university level, we are having, you know, deal with our deficit uh budget. And we we have to work hard to identify what essential, what not essential, asking ourselves. What can we do without and what we need to 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 cut to to bring out our budget into um into balance? So I I I'm committed into working, working along with with our trustee fellow members. Uh and the school district to to try to address that. Um and the second thing is, you know, I I I too disappointed at the end to see the enroll attendance at ninety one percent. Cuz I I know at the second interim, we are playing with the projection at ninety four ninety five. And we even end at ninety one, um it it's not nothing the business manager can do about in terms of how that impact the budget. I know that um we actually lucky at the end that swing two in basic, otherwise the 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 fund balance will be will be even worse. Um I'm not only, I'm not concerning the the necessary to revenue, but you know, obviously the students are showing up. Um with with less revenue that comes to the district, it would directly impact our student. Impact their family, impact their learning, uh and then on on top of that, you know, they're not showing up, you know, the learning learn loss. Uh they're not at school, uh we know that, you know, their school, they're learning, they're safe. Uh so I think that's something that we definitely also have to have to address. And I know that we are doing things to address the attendance, but hopefully that number, um you know, we can, we can, we can pay attention to it. So that it won't go go down any further, um because we don't know, you know, at the end of the day. It basically is gonna come help us um to provide us that extra two hundred thousand dollar, uh it could have been worse um. And those are, those are my my comment and again, thank you again for the district staff for for working really hard to to be able um. Bring us a a little bit better outcome at the end for uh for the for for our district budget, so.
Well, thank you Bob and thank you to your team for all of your hard work and I know we will have some, you know, discussions this year and the road ahead. And so I am, you know, the board is ready to support the team and and see where we go. Okay, with that, uh we're going. Oh, we need approval? Oh, thank you, okay, I need approval for uh. Business services approval of twenty four twenty twenty four twenty five on audited actuals for the elementary school district. Do I have an approval?
Motion.
A motion to approve.
Second, okay, moved by trustee Lau, second by trustee De Nava Marsh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes, do I have a motion for business services approval of the twenty four twenty five actual high school district?
Motion to approve.
Move by trustee De Nava Marsh.
I second.
Second by trustee uh Lau, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that moves.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, next we have educational services. Approval of the memorandum of understanding establishing uh collaboration between Tara Linda High School. City of San Rafael Vallesito's Children's Center for twenty five twenty six, twenty six twenty seven and school years for CTE education. Oh.
We're gonna have our coordinator secondary curriculum instruction present these next two items.
Okay.
Michelle Harland.
Hi, good evening.
Hello.
This board item is to presentation and action. It's MOU with SRCS and the city of Sal- uh San Rafael at Vallesito Children's Center. Uh Tara Linda High School CTE Education Course offers dual enrollment with Sonoma State and requires students to complete practicum hours. Many students prefer to complete these hours at an elementary or middle school. While SRCS schools are available for students who can drive, we need option for those who walk. To address this, we've created a partnership with the city of Sal- San Rafael Valley Vallesito Children's Center at. Vallesito Elementary School, this MOU formalizes the collaboration. Students will be able to complete their practicum hours during their seventh period class once a week for a total of fifteen to forty hours per year. Based on if students start their practicum in the fall or the spring semester. All students must complete a parent permission slip. In addition, the TL teacher will rotate between practicum sites throughout the year and will meet with the Vallesito Children's Center Coordinator. For a mid-year and end of year check-in. The next board item is a presentation and action item also, this MOU is identical to the last board item. In its purpose and structure, but is with Boost School, building orthopedic opportunities for students together. Do you have questions about the board item or either practicum placement?
No questions from trustee uh Lau, any questions from trustee De Nava Marsh?
No.
No, no questions, this seems really exciting and um it sounds like we found a creative solution for a gap that we have. So I wanna thank whoever was involved for that and um that's that's all I have to say. So I think I need a action to approve item three and action to approve item four. All right, let's start with number three, the memorandum of understanding between uh TL and the city of San Rafael Vallesito's Children's Center.
Motion to approve.
Moved by trustee De Nava Marsh, do I have a second?
A second.
Trust, second by trustee Lau, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes, do I have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding collaboration between TL? And uh Boost School for twenty twenty five twenty six, twenty six twenty seven for the CTE education practicum hours.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Move by trustee Lau, second by trustee De Nava Marsh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, those two pass, thank you so much for joining us. Okay, all right, now we have approval of a memorandum uh with Dominican nursing program. And Sanzu Farm to deliver nutrition lessons to San Pedro.
Yeah, so this is an exciting one where we have the Sanzuma Farm Program um that already exists on San Pedro's campus. And Dominican nursing students coming and doing a nine-week series of lessons um that are really around student nutrition. Uh and using the farm as an example and pulling examples from that in order to teach student nutrition lessons. Uh this year it'll be fourth graders, um and that runs, we have two different sessions going, so that runs the course of this full year. Um and we look forward to getting started soon.
Great, any questions? No questions, um I think my only question is, I know that Laurel Dell had a up and coming um nursery. AKA farm, or I don't know what this is, but I'm just curious in this situation. How how, I guess I I would wish to be inclusive of the hard work that I think Laurel Dell has done, but I think maybe, I don't know how this.
Yeah, so.
Isn't inclusive, is what I'm saying.
Yes, so we have a range of garden programs throughout San Rafael City. And I would say that at this point, they all look different based on what exists already at the school. Parent volunteers, uh parent um contributions through foundations uh and so forth. And so this is the one that San Pedro has currently, um the one at Laurel Dell is actually based on um. A really amazing donation we have that covers the cost for three years, that has K five student nutrition lessons as well as garden. Uh it kind of like baked in to that as well as cooking, um so there there's a few different models that I would say exist right now. Across our our elementary schools in San Rafael um. Yeah, the one that at Laurel Dell, I would say is a comprehensive one, I think the the one you're talking about. And we're really looking forward to seeing, this is our first year doing it this way, to seeing how that goes. Um and then I think we'll understand what uh that partnership looks like there and what that could look like if it's on at all possible in other spaces. But learning first.
Yeah, no, I thank you, thank you for the conversation, I just know that the number one topic amongst, I think it was the E two committee that I used to be on. Was nutrition and an inclusive program for all schools and I do know that nutrition programs are really hard to run. I'm not saying I know that.
We would love volunteers, Ethan, when you.
Yeah, I mean, I just think that, you know, when we have our PTA meetings, you know, talking about parent volunteers, there is this program, how to expand that. So I just, I think nutrition is really important to all of our schools, that's just why I was curious, so thank you so much, um okay, thank you for being open to that discussion. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the memorandum of Dominican nursing program and Sansa Farms to deliver. Uh nutrition lessons to San Pedro.
Motion to approve.
Okay, moved by trustee De Nava Marsh, do I have a second? I have a second by trustee Lau, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So exciting, thank you, and so are you here for the next one as well?
Right.
So I was actually at BV today admiring the just like beautiful entrance with both the tile mosaic and then the mural on the wall. So this is another opportunity, I think we've had murals at like three or four of our schools over the past couple of years. Um and so the Sun Valley um PTO is really excited to engage with uh resident artists as well. And this would be again where the students work together to create a mural design with a professional muralist. Uh I can't imagine trying to pull together lots of children's ideas and and make a comprehensive mural, but this is what they do. Um and then they'll work with the community to get that painted and then of course with MNO um in order to make sure that it's up in a way that will is sustainable at the school. Um and so Sun Valley is eager to begin that as well.
Wonderful, okay, so I would love to um have an approval or a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding. Between Laura Palmer, art instructor and muralist, and Sun Valley Elementary School Services in October. Or if you have any questions, sorry, before I move uh to a a motion, I didn't ask anybody if they had questions.
I guess my only question is um, is this through a a program or how does this muralist uh identified?
My understanding is that this is something that the PTO had been interested in, I think especially as they've seen them go up at other schools. Um and so they started looking, or maybe they knew someone, I honestly don't know, um for a muralist. Our other ones have been primarily through youth and arts, um often grant-based. Um and Sun Valley is often not gonna fall apart in those same grants and so they've put some money towards.
Thanks for the clarity, I just, I really was inspired by your question, actually.
I was actually hoping someone was gonna ask that, that's why I was. Comment, so it's also inclusive of all and.
I think it's just interesting, I mean, moving forward, especially when we do our roadshow of community engagement. Of like, how can we align and connect and learn best practices with the different community school gardens? Whether it be through like Sanzuma is very formal and so separate, not, I get it. Uh but again, going back to our community school partnerships work and, you know, leveraging the goodwill of community. Um I agree with President Martine of just like looking at how can we creatively look at public and private partnerships? And how can all of our twelve schools benefit from that, whether it be scalable or not, um but something to noodle about.
I would love to thank uh trustee De Nava Marsh for hearing what I was putting out there and reading my mind. Stating that it would be great to be inclusive of all of our schools and all of these amazing opportunities, so I'm sorry. Trustee uh Lau, I I would like to see if you have anything to say.
I just wanna, I just wanna say that is a really some significant investment. And so just wanna acknowledge and recognize the Sun Valley PTO for making that donation.
Right.
And commitment to supporting the home school, so um so thank you.
All right, do I have a motion?
Motion for enthusiastic, you know, is that right?
Second by trustee uh Lau, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we can't wait to visit it, all right, last, business services, approval of receipt of donations.
Right.
Good news.
President Martine, do you like coffee?
I love coffee, I have four cups, are you bringing coffee?
Do you like pastries and and cut fruit?
I mean, I love cut fruit and pastries.
Uh and do you like it when Morena brings it and spreads it out for the welcome event with a smile on her face?
La reina de Morena, I mean, por favor. That's like singing the songs, doing the dance.
So we have a donation that paid uh for a significant portion of. The back-to-school rally breakfast and treats that Morena uh and and her team provided. And that is uh fan pelt construction.
Oh, wow. Oh, wow.
Who is our construction management team donated two thousand dollars to uh support that back-to-school uh welcome-back rally. So we're really happy, I think this is the second year, maybe even third, I can't remember.
Yeah, couple of years.
Oh.
Couple of years in a row where they've donated um to support that, so so thank you.
Oh, my.
Fanpelt Construction.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fanpelt Construction.
Uh, and then we have um our first anonymous donation in a while. Um, so.
Who can it be?
Can't set up, can't set up.
I don't know, but we do have an anonymous donation to Venetia Valley.
Okay.
For of a drum set with accessories valued at eight hundred dollars, so.
Wow.
Thank you to whoever um gave that drum set to Venetia Valley and may the beat live on.
And I know how you prove every month.
Oh, like this, I.
And with that.
But it hit a wall at some point.
I don't care, Bob, I.
What is the grand total that we're approving today?
Oh, sorry.
I have another.
That'll be two thousand eight hundred dollars, thanks.
I had it over here, but.
Sold, two thousand eight hundred dollars.
Well, thank you to the great donations, Fanpelt and our anonymous supporter. Do I have an approval of these great donations to our wonderful students and teachers?
A motion to approve.
Okay, moved by uh trustee Lau, second by trustee De Nava Marsh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, that motion passes. And with that, we are.